Okay, if we received the minute or the notification publication is going around. You have a problem?
Yeah. It's not serious. It should be noted before you get to approve the proof of publication. Nate just pointed it out that the City Hall address is correct at 172 North Second Street, but the building inspector is still at 225 West Monroe Street, so.
So you have to cross the street to get here?
Right.
Roger, you got two.
I think some minor irregularities.
Right.
I'm not worried about it.
That's what I said.
Larry issues.
Thank you.
Okay, do I hear a motion to make the notification a matter of record?
So moved.
Just a second. Motion to main thing to accept the notification publication signified by saying aye.
Aye.
At the same time, motion carries. And we have passing around the notification to the adjoining property owners.
I, uh.
Okay, do I have a motion to make the affidavit and notice of public hearing a matter of record?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify, any discussion I should ask? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
At the same time, motion carries. Okay, the item that I kind of skipped over is the approval of the minutes. You received the minutes the previous meeting via email. Are there any additions or corrections to those? During then, I'll take a motion to accept the minutes as emailed.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
At the same time, motion carries. Okay, we have petition before us. If you'll notice on the agenda that the second one is withdrawn, so we don't have that one to deal with this afternoon. We do have Rex Harris, Hill Ray Investments requesting site plan review for proposed strip mall at 721 North 13th Street, Decatur, Indiana, 46733.
Brett Muller, Moss Engineering here to represent the owner. So I have the owner and the builder here for questions when they come up, but I'll give the general overview and I go from there. So what the owner is looking to do is to build a proposal for unit strip mall, just under 6,000 square feet and 61 by 85. With this, in the previous meeting, we had requested a rear setback for entrance current to allow us to construct the pipe throughout down to five foot to the property line. And we'd also requested a parking space for entrance, which was requested. So basically, what you're seeing in front of you was submitted a few weeks ago. I had a meeting with Nate and Roger to kind of go over what was proposed. They brought up a few items that were addressed and I think, Roger, correct me, you have the most current set of drawings. Yeah, I was sharing a few days ago. What was brought up at that meeting were a few, which I thought were very good points. Basically, along Dayton Street, the original drawing I had in the current, the asphalt just goes all the way to Dayton Street, there's no defining entrance. And with Nate and Roger's suggestion, I completely agreed, because what's due basically construct an access on Dayton Street. So as you'll see, is proposed only four foot entrance on the west side of the property. It proposes basically soft cut in the asphalt there, putting grass there to find out a buffer and more of a distinct entrance. So the other item I think that was brought up, basically, I had the dumpster, which is on the southwest corner of the building. I kind of had that accessing it from the west, and I basically turned that so the dumpster could basically come in, date in, or just go straight towards the building to unload. So and I also had, as you can see on the front of the building, there's two circles have the northeast corner and the southeast corner of the building. Those are proposed shade trees, just we don't meet, Nate, correct me, we don't meet the green space per ordinance, but this whole lot of existing asphalt, we're trying to do what we can just to kind of soften it. So we're basically proposing a couple shade trees and some landscape islands just to help with aesthetics. I think what else? I also have in the southeast corner of the property, I have a proposed sign location. Those details, before that being constructed, would be given to Roger, just to make sure those that do need ordinance requirements. So basically, I have shown him a plan, the proposed location, and that, I don't know if that will be discussed tonight. I know there's a lot of signs in this area, so I'm assuming there's some flexibility on that location based on maybe a site visit with Roger and the owner before that would be constructed, but basically, a new sign will be constructed for this facility. The proposed, both right now for the owner is to construct basically the first, sort of a shell, what I would call it, four walls and roof, and then market to try to get tenants in there. There is nothing, no leases are signed or no tenants right now on that, so I can't give you a timeline. It all depends on how things go for the owner.
You do have a finished elevation rolling.
Yes.
These plans don't show what you've got proposed, they might want to see that.
The owner had, the architect has already sent the building to the state, got state building approval that depending on how the meeting goes tonight, if approved, I wouldn't be surprised if they start foundations in a few days. So let me see if I have, I just have one copy, apologize. So it's a nice looking front, side, also. I think I have a floor plan you can pass around, just all this passover to give you an idea of what the proposed look will be. New utilities, show up for new water services to the back. Basically, this will allow only one tenant in use. It will be on also, if someone's not paying, they can shut just one user off instead of the whole building. There will be a new sanitary tap, which is all to the west, which is in the city's property, so no access, misuse the tap over there. Stormwater, basically all, right now, the site is all asphalt, all of this basically sheet drains, it all flows to the southwest, being that it's a consistent condition, all asphalt and different planes, as far as I've been told at this point, of major water issues in the area. No storm detention in underground, which required, so basically, I've provided a great plan to show how the water will basically flow the same as it does today. Thanks pretty much. If you'd like to answer any questions, if you're the owner.
Okay, anyone on the board have questions to ask at this point?
Brett, when you point out here to south end, that you're removing the asphalt and installing grass, what does that do to do with the Dayton Street?
Nothing.
So it actually keeps it, keeps it at, at pretty much.
We're holding the curb, I call it a curb cut, basically, the curb comes off 27, this whole notch way, just going straight west.
Okay, so it won't affect the business just directly south though. Then I have another, and I don't know if the board wants to address this, but if we want to make this matter of record, if we would ever do any sidewalking out close to the highway, I think we should point out that we would want them to be a part of the installation sidewalk, is that, am I saying it right, Tim? You know what I mean? A lot of times, we address sidewalks, but like people say, there's no sidewalks in that area.
Right.
But you never know if we'd ever want to put sidewalks out there. I think it should be a matter of record that they would accept that responsibility.
Are you saying that responsibility, in other words, they pay for the installation?
Exactly.
Rather than require them to put it in now?
Right.
You're saying that they would, you would grant the approval, subject to the condition that if the city requires sidewalks, it would be installed at the owner's expense at a later time?
Right. Only because of some of these developments along 13th Street, we actually not put that in as a requirement, and we've had sidewalks run up and they stop and then.
In that respect, I do have a question, that if we install or require a five foot sidewalk, is that what it would be? Do we have adequate turn radius for the parking places that are in the layout? It makes it awful tight.
There is, there is not room unless, I can't remember going out there, is it the curb line, grass in the sidewalk? I mean, I know that's the ideal situation.
That's the ideal situation.
The only way it would work would be the sidewalk would have to be up against the curve of 27.
Which creates a safety issue of encouraging pedestrians to be on a major thoroughfare.
It kind of goes back to why I came up with a five foot rear setback. It also aligns with those other buildings, but it's also kind of, yeah, my property line, a number of the back of car out, parking space, sidewalk building, it was kind of all a, you know.
I didn't mean to throw.
No.
Because chances are, there's enough asphalt there for people to walk along 13th Street because the businesses asphalt go right out to 13th Street. I don't want to throw a monkey wrench into this.
It'd almost be better, I know we're getting off subject, the city owns the property in the back, it'd almost be better to put along that fence between the golf course and people who are walking into the park to get them away from the street for that.
Yeah, I can attest, I live out there, and there's no easy way to walk along 27 or even to get across 27, other than one of the major intersections where you have a stoplight.
The widest intersection across Walker there is in not the tent for pedestrians. Right now, I don't know where the park board is as far as development and trying to create a pedestrian friendly crossing on the west side and where they're trying to direct traffic. That's not been finalized, to my knowledge.
Right.
I think if that may be a valid point, is to try to take this right away to the rear.
If you live in Riverside, if you live in Winchester Estates, and you want to walk to the Zesto, try it sometime.
Yeah, and that is a good point.
You almost have to cut through the golf course.
That is a good point, Brett, because the sidewalks that we just installed last year behind the back forty junction could actually carry on at the rear of these buildings down our easement. I mean, if you, if we'd ever want to put sidewalks in there, so that, yeah.
Yeah, the sidewalk along the highway right of way would not be desirable, in my mind. And with what's planned for the future for Hannah Nutman and the walkability plans for the city's long range plans and connecting all of the parks with walkability, I don't think along the 13th Street right of way fits into any of those discussions.
Brett, you mentioned that the back of the property aligns with the strip mall to the north. Does the front as well, or does it protrude or sit back further?
The front, we're going to project real far better. But I, I've never measured that building, Google Earth, it looks like they're going to be about 50 foot wide, ours is 60, so, you know, the rears are, the front's going to be a little, we're going to be a little closer to the road. I think with the front, they've got double angle parking on the front. Yeah, and I was, and I told you this afternoon, I thought they had, just, they do have angle on the other side. But it's just a combination of them doing angle, I think their, their driving lanes narrow because of the angle, and then their building, it's just enough of it. I tried everything to try to get angle parking, but it's just not, you know, it's not enough room.
Any other question?
Do we need, do we need to develop essentially an encroachment agreement to allow the parking within the right of way? Essentially, the conditions of that with this.
Either that or you make it a condition of approval of site plans, what the conditions are. But yeah, you can, if I recall, we did an encroachment agreement with the restaurant just down the way.
Okay.
We have an alley that runs through there, we didn't vacate the alley, but we allowed them to pave over and make, so we could, you know, if you want to make it a condition that an encroachment agreement be entered into that would allow for the encroachment on the public property, but with the understanding, whatever your, whatever conditions.
We still retain the rights to the use of the right of way, that's what I don't want.
You have access and you have the right to maintain utilities, AEP does as well. The issue that you need to weigh in one way or the other is, do, you know, if Rex puts in improvements and they get torn up, is it our responsibility to repair them back to what they were, or is it his responsibility because he's using the city's property? So that's your call on that, I don't care, I just need to know what to put in the encroachment agreement.
I would recommend the latter, essentially, essentially, or providing free parking to justify part of the variance. I mean, even with the variance, we still have a number of parking spaces, I believe it is, on the rear. It's a risk of trying to use, develop that size. Another question we'll have to make sure we do is, we need to officially grant the waiver and landscaping ordinance. We can do that as planning commission, so we just need to make sure that it's part of our code, that we officially grant that waiver allowing the landscaping as proposed. Can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
My concern would be, just when the wording, as far as AEP comes through and destroys everything, is that the owner's responsibility to fix? If the city comes up and fixes, you know, the owner, you know, they can.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a risk you take. If you're going to use property that you don't own, and you're going to make improvements on that property, that's the risk you take. If you want to keep the improvements only on your property and somebody damages it, that's different, and obviously, they have an obligation to repair it. But the issue is that where AEP's line is, Roger, I think you said that they try to put it on the west side so they can get equipment in there. So if you've got paving out into that area, and they bring in heavy equipment and it ruts the, you know, the area, then who's responsible for that? I don't know if AEP is willing to pay that, if they're on their right of way.
I know, you know, it's just the city's, if we have to get back there, repair the water line or something like that, if we dig it up, they're going to patch it back in.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's our practice, but.
Well, and I want to clarify, I don't want to make it sound unreasonable from the city's standpoint, because when we dig up a street and we do utility repairs to a public right of way, we're going to repair the travel lanes. But there is additional asphalt here that goes beyond the travel lane up to the building. We're not going to go beyond what's the typical travel lanes to do repairs specifically for this, but if there's work that AEP does that destroys roads in there, they're going to be obliged, obligated to do some work that's to be repaired.
So it's, you know.
And it's still going to be a road that's going to be scheduled for maintenance.
Right. If it's, if it's the common practice of the city to repair it back to the condition it was, was, and that's your feeling that that's what it should be, then I'll put that into the agreement. I just need to know how you guys want to word it.
Yeah, I guess I just want to make sure that this is employee parking, that if they're happy with, let's say someone comes and tears half of it out, and they just stone up to the building and they're content, they don't want to spend any money, are they obligated to put it back?
How much were they going to develop back here, Brett?
Say it again.
How much were you going to develop in the, in the rears comparable to the, what the units north of you do, or I mean, because that's all, there's no asphalt.
There's about, I'd say there's probably about 10 to 15 feet of asphalt off of their property.
Okay.
That they're going to be using.
Okay.
So they're not proposing anything more or less to that.
And your intent is to preserve the asphalt that's there.
Depending on, yeah, I mean, there's a chance, depending on how the grades work out, that, you know, it may get lost anyway, just, you know, we're putting a big building where they use to park cars, I mean, they didn't care that, now we have a flat. Your intention is. Yeah, the intention is to leave it exactly like it is during construction, stuff like that will happen. I don't know.
Any further questions?
You did mention all them posts were coming out, like on the.
That's what I'm showing, is all those little posts.
Posts around there.
A lot of those conversations, I haven't. At least the ones along 27 are coming up because we needed to build back out of our parking spots, so.
The ones on the directly north side of your, of that lot, Brett, golf carts can't travel on 27, so a lot of people come down the, from the park, come down the alley behind the complex to the north, and would like access through that area, for example, to Taco Bell. I, I had requests from the golf course, from the people that live out at the golf course to open that up, and I got with Mr. Schaefer, and he opened that, that north end, and I would request that we have that, so that, so that golf carts can actually get to Taco Bell or to Rural King and come behind there.
Actually, there's a lot of posts that are in the city.
Right, that's what I'm saying, if it's in the city, we have a right to.
We can do it too, yeah, sure.
I don't think, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think they're going to be able to cut it off, those disappeared tomorrow.
Comes with enterprise for the bid, right?
They're only two inch, I think those are only two inch. Okay, I just, I just guess I wanted to point that out, that you don't block that in the back, which sensitive cities, it won't show that.
No problem.
Question regarding the stoplight, I know we talked about it, there really isn't a development that shows how the parking lot is lit. Can you kind of address that?
Right now, there's four or five light poles along 27. Plan is to get new light poles and not be more than what's there that's been being used there now. Those exact locations are pinned down necessarily. I think what I have proposed is wall pack, basically on the backside of the building, the light up for employee, basically a light that would just shine down over the doors, not onto the golf course, probably the north and south side also, and then a couple, a few lights along 27. Right now, I'm showing there's five along 27, and then there's two or three that are going to be dead load in the middle.
Those five, and then there's two there, and I think it might be one on the power pole as well. So these go away, those stay. I'll still be able to get those.
Yeah, these two will be tight, that's why I see that one, you know, like one there and there.
Okay. I think the way the ordinance was written when you applied, we didn't require photometrics put under the current ordinance, it's what the future will need to happen, photometrics will be required, so.
You know, how to just, you know, normally we do like a sharp cut off, that's not leaving on that.
It's going to need to happen, we need to have the cutoffs, fixtures, so just that you're aware of that, to go to finalization of the construction.
I understand it's going to be four separate small businesses.
That is what I suppose. If you want all of it, you can have all of it.
Well, that's what I was wondering, if one popular business got in there for that building, would that parking be substantial then?
I think, I kind of brought that up in a previous meeting, you know, I think, I don't know how much that weighed on their decisions at all, but, you know, I think the owner may have issues depending on the tenant based on the parking.
That's what I said, if you had a real, a real popular business that would have people flocking in there, would that change it from the parking that you're going to get for four small ones?
There's nothing, there's nothing we can add for that, I think it's going to be a factor of basically kind of the tenants they wanted us having. Parking will support, you know, a restaurant and, you know, other lower traffic, you know, different stuff like that, but definitely won't be able to support, you know, four restaurants. So I don't know if that answers your question.
I was thinking of one big full building restaurant.
Well, and that would depend on the category of business.
My experience working with different restaurants, they know that if we're going to lease your space, we need 35 parking spots. You tell them I have 38, they'll go somewhere else. That's my, that's my experience, it's just, you know, go somewhere. So.
Now, the number of parking spots that are available is probably going to dictate the type of tenant you end up with.
If there's a lack of parking or if there's problems with parking, that'll weigh in decisions with the planning commission moving forward, if there's any request for extensions or modifications.
Sure.
Because you're, you're going to go back for a second variance, you're going to come back to the planning commission for a second planning commission approval, so that will, that will weigh into that, so.
Any further questions? The commission members at this time. Okay, then let's move on. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition? Okay, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the?
Getting there, anyone to add?
Nope. Then the board, are there any final questions that you have?
Just a clarification that this is a site plan review, and as the terminology is changing with the new codes that have been adopted, is this a final site plan review? We've used the term preliminary and final in the past, but there have been some procedural changes where a lot more of the review was done with department heads up front, so it's my assumption that this is what we would have previously considered to be a final plan review.
This would fall under, under the new ordinance, would fall under chapter 150.330, procedure for site plan review. So because this would be a C3 zone, this would still qualify for planning commission approval, and future applicants under a C1 or C2, we have administrative approval unless there's variances applied to the project. So this would be considered essentially a final site plan review, it wouldn't have any further submittals, they would still need to comply with Roger with as builds regarding getting their occupancy done.
And I think, I think the process has been that Brett has met with Roger and Nate, and I don't know if Jeremy was involved, but on at least a couple of occasions prior, and that there were some modifications made in the course of those discussions, so.
Correct. We've done, we're already. We've done, we've already started the practice of preliminary type of review meetings, it addresses a number of the questions, so that there's not as much, many issues to, to discuss. And because there aren't any public utility modifications other than service connections, that was something we need for a long time.
You're not looking at infrastructure improvements?
Typical to the subdivision.
Some of the subdivisions, so that's more important to come back and review and have final approval at that point. But at this juncture, if the planning commission is inclined, you can treat this as preliminary and final approval.
Okay, that was my question, that, that we've done that. And a question to Brett is the additional meetings up front made life easier for you?
Absolutely.
Okay, that was our intent.
Yeah, I hope, you know, I think Nate and Roger think it's beneficial to just, you know, I know everybody's here for, you know, to get things moving forward, it goes smooth, so I hope they feel the same way as I do.
And then we want the developer to be able to move forward on a timely basis.
Yeah, so, yeah, I appreciate that, and we appreciate that.
Okay, any other final questions or comments? Do I hear a motion then to accept this as the preliminary final site plan? Motion's been made, there's that?
Second.
Motion's been made in the second, now, any further discussion?
How about the restriction on the rear parking?
Yeah, because I have a question. Okay. Okay, nay once is a condition that you're including a waiver of landscape requirements?
Yes, that means the...
So that's part of the motion.
Okay.
Is that correct? Second, okay. With regard to sidewalks, is that being required or not, either now or later?
Is later enforceable?
If you make it a condition of approval, that at a, at a later time, if the city decides there's a need for sidewalks, it's the...
It will go to this owner or his subsequent orders, owners?
Yes, you put that in the order, or the approval itself.
Okay.
So is, is that a requirement?
My opinion is it's an undue burden upon the property owner, because we don't know that that's going to happen. So I would say that we are not going to imply or impose that restriction.
Any other comment?
That would be discussion.
I agree. I think, I think if, if we did something, we'd go to the rears. Yeah, I, I didn't want to do that, I didn't, Brett, I didn't want to put a burden, you know, so...
So, no sidewalks?
We're not addressing, a lot of times we, this thing goes for bias, and we don't address sidewalks, and next thing you know, we, like I said, we got sidewalks running, and then they stop, and so...
Okay, so Jack and Denny, Tyler, I haven't heard you guys on this issue, are you...
I agree with Greg.
You agree with Greg? Denny?
I agree with Greg.
Okay, so as admitted, as admitted in this...
As admitted, there's no requirement on the sidewalk.
Okay.
On the encroachment agreement, if the, if the utilities require maintenance, and we tear up an improvement that's out into the city property, is there a responsibility to repair that back to what it was? Or is that the owner's responsibility? I just need to know, so I know what...
That would play a part.
Yeah, I mean, that's up to the owner, whether the owner wants to put it back, but I just need to know what to put in the encroachment agreement, because a condition of the approval is that subsequent to today, there will be an encroachment agreement signed that authorizes, Rex, your parking back there, but it will have some provision with regard to, the city assumes a responsibility to repair you.
This is Rex.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Rex.
I'm ready to...
Look at the wrong person.
Yeah, but I would think that, you know, it's encroached on right now, there's asphalt back there, you know, so it hasn't definitely been used that all along anyway, so I'd say if it gets tore up, you know, that's up to, I would think, if he wants to fix it, he can, if he doesn't, he's not going to require the city, I would think.
Tim, well, I guess what I would propose, looking at this plan, their parking uses the east 15 feet of our right-of-way.
Mm-hmm.
So if we're going to list the encroachment agreement identifying as the east 15, 15 feet of the right-of-way, that they're allowed to use that as shown in this plan, that would essentially cover that, because that would not be pavement that would benefit essentially the public right-of-way. We would not be putting the asphalt in for our use, so that would be essentially their obligation. If we were to repave the alleyway, we would not be paving the parking spaces, we would stop and shore to that, so if they would need to repair those, that's their...
And if we did pave it, and we had to repair it, most likely it's going to be in that area, and then we'd put it back, or we would leave it however the city wants it to be.
Leave it as a ringstone up to the surface and leave it there, so it's at least right-of-way.
Okay.
But we would not take the additional expense of paving that, so. That would give you at least the description, east 15 feet to use.
Anything else you need to...
The lighting requirements, we don't have to put anything in, you're satisfied with that?
Yeah, they're going to use, they're going to include the cut, the full cutoffs.
Okay, all right.
Anyone else any restrictions we need to include? Okay, with those additions to the motion, hopefully everyone agrees with those additions to the motion. Okay, any further discussion? Own favorite sign if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? You have reached the agreement, so you've been given the okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other owners that need to be addressed?
I probably told some earlier, since I got down, yeah.
You didn't write it down?
I am down.
Is this, is this yours?
Is Fleetwood going to be coming back with their maintenance facility?
Make sure it's all there.
Probably.
Don't know at this point, but I would not, I'd say probably.
Okay.
Was this a new lot that they acquired, or going to acquire? Was that going to be a new lot that they have, or they want to...
That one where they park in there now.
Oh, they just want to pave it and line it up there?
Make it look nicer.
Oh, I thought it was an additional lot.
No, it's that one they park in now.
Yeah.
Anyone have any other old business? Any new business?
Do we need to review? City council approved and passed the updated ordinance with significant changes to the land use and the process by which we review plans and subdivisions and improvement location permits such as this. Do we need to do reviews of that, or has everyone seen a copy of those?
Well, one, one question that I have is, if I understand correctly, the new code, does the new code say that formerly zoned B properties are now zoned C properties? Or did we just change the zoning classifications?
Essentially just changed the zoning classification.
Okay.
So where it said B is now so is C.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, our zoning map still references B zoning classifications.
Correct.
So what we need to do is probably adopt an ordinance that clarifies that...
The transition?
The transition, that what was formerly zoned B1 or B2 is now C1 or C2.
Okay.
Because if, if the ordinance that was recertified doesn't do that...
Then all the old waivers and...
Then we're operating under the new code provisions, but we have the zoning classifications on our zoning map that are different.
And I could, I'll make comment to Ethan that our, our public maps on our website or on the, on the website can be updated so that that's reflected for public access.
Yeah, I think...
So that's, that's, serves essentially as our official map.
Yeah, because we, when we amend, you can have amendments to the zoning code through either an amendment of the map or amendment of the language, and our zoning classifications are on the map.
Okay.
Okay, so we need to, we need to transfer the zoning from B to C, and if that's not included in the recertification, and I, I don't know that it is...
I don't know that there's, I don't know that there's a specific step that said these were what they were, and this is what they are.
Right, that's what, no worries.
So we need to pass that?
Is there some kind of, we need to pass that, and once it's done, then we need to, then we need to change the zoning map.
Then that's essential, okay. I'll, I'll let him know that that's in the works, and once that's approved, then he can make that adjustment.
Yeah, because as I was looking at that today, I'm thinking, I don't remember seeing that in the code, but it may be there, I just have to look again.
I don't think American legal included that, no.
And we need to put that back into our ordinance book, to show that we changed from B1 to C.
Yeah.
I mean, in our, in our ordinance...
Well, what the, what the, what American legal is going to do is, as we adopt additional ordinances, they're going to update our code book, and then they'll send us revisions, and we just substitute it in.
And Roger's got some information on changes in the physical code books, in that we're going to a three-ring binder that will be a lot easier to update.
Yeah.
I'm holding one in my hands here, this is essentially a whole book, start out one book.
Yeah, this is, this is the code book. So as, as we go through, he can pull out the old pages and just substitute the new one, it's going to be a lot easier to do.
We will, we will find that the planning commission will meet less often with the new land development standards. If there's development in a C1 or a C2 and it's a performing use, we won't need to be calling meetings to meet on something that essentially is compliant. Roger and I can work together in that. If there's any variances or waivers to standards, then Roger and I would essentially defer back to the planning commission, so it will come back to the planning commission, the BCA. If it is a C3, which is what this zoning district is, an I1 or an I2, I1 and I2 are all special use exemptions for land use, it will automatically come back to the planning commission. It also streamlines the approval of the middle process by a bit.
Well, and during the review process, it was discussed to discuss training sessions for planning commission with the new subdivision approval process.
Correct.
So what I would like to do is submit for consideration the idea that the planning commission authorized Nate and Roger to put together a highlights reel, if you will, of the significant changes of process, and then schedule meetings for education of this board with what the significant changes are before we're presented with those changes with a developer that wants to fast-track something, and we're not familiar with the process.
Are they going to get, to get us more of those code books?
We can find out, or we have electronic copies we could send out in email to everyone, the chapters that affect the planning commission and the BCA. Essentially, it's, it's the back half of the book, I mean, the back order of the book.
Get these guys, at least one that's going to affect the planning commission.
Yeah, so we can do that fairly easily.
So you're going to distribute the electronic copies pending receipt of hard copies?
Is that something Sharon can send out then? She, does she have, she has electronic copies, is correct, or is it?
He's got a hard copy.
I think Billis has electronic copies.
So we can work with that and get that sent out to everybody. And are you hoping to try to meet in August, a special...
Well, that would be the question, how long would it take for the building department of the city engineer to prepare a significant changes educational piece that we can then come in and discuss?
I would, don't think I'd do it long this year.
Yeah, I would try to set something up. If, if what we're looking for is just a sit-down, kind of a roundtable discussion, something informal, if we're looking for more of a presentation, PowerPoint kind of comparisons, then that'll take a little more time to develop, but I'd say...
Well, then the question goes to the city attorney, that if all of us sit around the table, that is a meeting, and it has to be advertised, correct?
Right, right.
Even if it's an education meeting?
Yeah, it's just a workshop.
Essentially just a workshop, I would say.
Be on the same day?
Well, you do it the same day, it's just, we'll, we'll try to, I'd say we, our first Tuesday in September at 4:30.
Well, we've got anything else on the agenda?
We'll just set a deadline, and I guess I'm just going to get it done.
Okay, do we need a motion for that, or did we just take care of it?
I would, I would just have Roger and Nate schedule the meeting, advertise it, you know, and at that point, you know, notices will be sent out to everyone. But if you're talking about doing it in the first meeting in September, then you guys all can plan on that.
Is the first...
The first is the first, right?
Sharon's not here, I'm in a house today, but I get behind that.
My consent, can we say that, that, look, I'm going ahead and just get them together and make a decision?
What have you done this?
You can head tonight.
What's that?
Well, that's happened this time, this one. You and Roger.
If there's, if there's a conflict or something comes up that has to be delayed, we'll, we'll know before the advertisements go out, so you'll get, you'll get a copy advertisement that happens.
Yeah, do it either the first or the third Tuesday, just like you normally, we normally have a...
Tentatively set the first, and then if that doesn't work out?
Since we're going to send an advertisement out, if Brett's quick and gets Fleetwood on to that September meeting, he can piggyback on our...
Then their hand's not mine.
There you go.
Well, and I agree with what Nate said, that the procedures will actually be simpler for planning commission, and they're going to be more straightforward, and there'll be less gray areas, but we need to know what those changes are.
There's a, there's a, there's a more detail in the specifics that we should see for plans, and so what we'll be doing moving forward is, we'll have, well...
Okay. I do have something else, while I think of it. And I, if you're done.
Well, yeah, I mean, I know what, what, tonight, everyone's got places to be, so I want to make sure we close up.
Dean Philling called, and Steve Crey, or whatever the company is that's developing the new section of the golf course along Winchester Road, that area back there. He has a CD that's pledged as surety to finish up the infrastructure improvements. That's up for renewal.
The passing bubble.
Yeah, so the question is, is that something that they need to renew, or does it need to be reduced, or, and I think what was happening is they anticipated that, you okay? Okay. They were looking to move forward and get a lot of the work done yet this fall, so if that were the case, then they were hoping that they wouldn't have to renew the bond or the, the savings certificate deposit and pledge that as collateral. But in talking with Steve yesterday, because of the weather, it probably has pushed them back fairly significantly in what they're going to be able to do now. So that's up to you. It's a, it's a surety to make certain that the developer actually completes the infrastructure improvements that were required in the site of, of plan approval.
Were they just doing a phase of it? I haven't heard anything, huh?
I, I don't know.
See, when they originally got that subdivision okayed, it was two phases. This first one that they've done, and then the next phase is going to tie it together.
But is, is that what we're talking about, or are we talking about the passing bubble on Winchester that Charlie was the advocate for?
I, I think that was taken care of.
Yeah.
And I think we reduced the surety bond...
Okay.
There.
Right.
But now, I think what they're talking about is probably the streets.
The problem are the streets and...
Okay.
And I think we should keep it on until...
Well, you know, we've got to have some kind of a guarantee.
Okay. So I told Dean that I would bring it up to you, because if you wanted to make any modifications, or if you wanted to waive that, he needed to know, otherwise he was going to go forward.
But I think we, we need some kind of a guarantee.
I'm not suggesting you waive it, because the, the improvements have not been put in, so I would recommend that you have some protection to assure that it happens.
Well, and I, I think he'd be afraid for us to go back and, and review it again, because using current commodity prices, he may actually owe more money in surety than we have. I don't know.
Well, and I think Steve, Steve mentioned to you before about opening up like another, I forget what he said, 20 lots or something, and stop there, like, he wants to break up the second phase into phases because of, you know, they're not loaning money on golf courses like they used to, therefore they can't go get...
And we're, we're referring to the Highlands of Cromedos.
Cromedos.
But then the new section, the...
New section over there off of...
Section that's got the new...
Yeah, off of Winchester Road.
It's the north section.
So no action by this board requires that it stays in place?
No, I just need to let Dean know whether he needs to renew the certificate of surety.
I'd say, I'd say yes.
Okay.
I don't like everyone's in favor of yes.
All right.
Any other items? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Perfect, now I guess we've had to twist it a second together. Own favorite sign if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Or the same sign?
Who made the motion, second?